...of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the municipal clerk on January 7th, 2013, faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune and the Star-Ledger on January 8th, 2013, at 8:47 a.m., and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor of Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on January 8th, 2013, at 9 a.m. The fire exits are to my right and left, your left and right, respectively. I would remind people up here, as well as members of the public, to please speak into the microphones when speaking, and assistive listening devices are available. Mark Mappin, welcome back from your travels, and would you please listen to Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Minkoff?
Here.
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Here.
Councilman Erickson?
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Here.
Councilman Malley?
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier?
Here.
Borough Administrator Kowak?
Here.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the amendments of the regular and conference meetings held September 3rd, 2013, is distributed?
Sumo.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to assume there are no no's, so the motion is carried. We have James McCrone here from Main Street. Jamie, you have 60 seconds for a Main Street Minute. Go.
No pressure. Thank you, Mayor. A few quick things to update you all on. We are, if this is the 16th, we are, was this the 16th or the 17th? We are 13 days from the 29th, which is the Arts in the Park Festival. We're looking forward to it. Things are going really well. We have significantly more artists than we did last year, where we have greater sponsorship and greater participation from the businesses, all of which is great. We're really, really looking forward to it. I think a lot of this can be given credit to our new event coordinator. We, Main Street Borough Park hired a part-time person to run our, to help manage our events, coordinate them, frankly, Rebecca Hirsch. Many of you may know her. She was not able to be here today. I wanted to introduce you to all. For those who haven't already met her, I will make sure she's here at the next council meeting. The, but, she's been, she's jumped right in. She's a long time volunteer with Main Street, so there wasn't a lot of, you know, introductions that needed to be done. She just sort of jumped into the job and has been really pulling things together nicely. The idea then, obviously, is that it will leave more time for me to do other things, among them, something I think I mentioned here one, a month ago, maybe two months ago at my Main Street Minute, regarding perpetual prospecting, that we want to be filling our vacancies more quickly as they occur, and that I will be reaching out to downtown realtors and brokers to bring them on board and maybe work more collaboratively to actually do that, and to create, if you will, sort of a bench that you can go to, of people who are actually clamoring to get into vacancies as they occur. The summer cinema series concludes this weekend with Taco Cinema. We will actually, I'm afraid I forgot to write down what the movie is, the outdoor movie, but next, we will also be serving tacos from a vendor who is coming to us from Manhattan, and so we're really excited to try all those. That's the 21st, Saturday, the 21st, right there in the space where the artisan market sets up. The Shop Highland Park Rewards loyalty card should go out this week. We're very excited about that. That is, as many of you already know, the loyalty card, and I forgot to, I meant to bring it as a prop, that residents of, will be mailed out to all the residents of Highland Park, renters and homeowners, and it allows them to receive discounts at participating businesses here in Highland Park. Those discounts will accrue, and the individual customer or resident will be able to decide whether they want to actually take that accrued, those accrued savings in an annual lump sum payment, or have it applied toward their property taxes. We've been working together, obviously, with the Borough and with Kathy Kovac and some others regarding bringing this into being, and I thank them for all their hard work. As I said, it should be going out this week. And Arts in the Park, the farmer's, the farmer's market continues to do exceptionally well. We have brought in a sponsor for it for the end of the year. St. Peter's University Hospital will be sponsoring the farmer's market, and will have a presence there going forward to the end of the year, and we are in talks now to bring them on as a full-time sponsor for 2014. There's a lot of exciting collaboration that we can have there. And then lastly, the redesign of the Shop Highland Park website should be done in about a week, and we'll be rolling that out as well. I think I ran over my 60 seconds.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Okay, new addition to the council agenda is, it occurred to me that we have so many treasures around Highland Park, and one that we don't hear from that often publicly, at least in a formal way, although we all use it all the time as the Highland Park Public Library. So I've asked the president of their board, Mark Mappin, to join us and give us a little Highland Park Public Library Minute. Mark, we'll give you 65 seconds, since you haven't been able to do this for us before.
Well, this is a shameless rip-off of the Main Street Highland Park Minute. They can have a minute, we can have one too, Highland Park Public Library. And what I want to report to you on is what happened over the summer. You know, there was above-average heat and above-average rain, but we had a very good turnout. I went to the library one morning in July, and saw there were 32 people waiting to come into the library. Old folks, young folks, all kinds of Highland Parkers wanted to take advantage of the library. And they did. We checked out something like 13,000 books in July and August. That's a number that's pretty close to the population of Highland Park, as a matter of fact. So they come to the library not just to check out books, but for the CDs, to use the public computers, and so on. And we have calculated that we get over 60 people an hour who come into the library on the average day. So I think that's a, that's a big number. One of the things that brings kids in, people, adults, is public programs. We have a lot of them. We have Bunsen Fossils for kids, we did that over the summer, book buddies for teens, helping younger kids read, workshops on how to blog. We also had an event that attracted about 80 people because a distinguished Highland Park author came in to talk about his new book. And in the interest of full disclosure, I have to tell you, I am the author. We're planning more things for the fall. We've already done a blood drive the day after tomorrow. Some actors are going to perform The Great Gatsby as a radio drama. Let me give you some statistics about the library. The Friends of the Library Book Sale brought in $6,580 this year. But the best news is our fundraising campaign. We raised $16,370, which is 30 percent higher than the year before. Our library directory, the library director, Jane Stanley, went to an American Libraries Association workshop on fundraising, so we hope that our capacity will increase. We appreciate the repairs that the Borough did on the library, like filling in the potholes in the parking lot. Appreciate that very much. Our new HVAC system, I am glad to report, is working, and you may remember, this HVAC system was funded by a grant from the Freeholders. There were some bumps in the road trying to install it, but now it's working. So that's good. But here's some bad news, okay?
No, I'm saying yay.
No, 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 that's good. But the problem is that the roof is leaking like crazy, and it's one of these kind of situations where we had to put buckets out to catch the water, you know, in the library. This is happening evidently because there's a membrane on the roof, and I didn't know that roofs had membranes, but we do, and these membranes have warranties, and the warranty on our membrane has expired. So this is something that the library's going to have to look into, you know, how to replace that. As many of you know, probably all of you, that Jane Stanley had some pretty serious surgery. I'm glad to tell you that she is recovering very well. She's always calling up the library staff, the board members, and so on. There've been many Jane Stanley sightings in the library, and I think there'll be more. We continue working on our strategic plan, and if you'll grant me another minute down the road in the future, I'd be glad to talk about what's happening with the strategic plan.
I think we'll be able to afford another minute in the near future for that.
Okay, all right, here goes. I want to tell you a Highland Park story that's absolutely true, so I will, and tell you something about Highland Park, and what a great place it is to live. So I was on the sidewalk, waiting for the light to change so I could walk over Rowerton Avenue, and a police car pulled up next to me on the curb, and the window rolled down, and the policeman inside said, "Hey, Mark, I got a copy of your book." And then the window rolled up and he drove away. And I think that tells you a lot about Highland Park. It's a reading town and a great place to live, and I like to think that the library contributes to that.
Thank you, Mark. Is that the history of New Jersey, or is that a different book that they're talking about?
This is a new one called Prohibition Gangster, The Rise and Fall of the Bad Generation.
Oh, okay.
I recommend it. A lot is a career book.
As a mayor, I take that to heart. Thank you. Okay, council reports. Councilmember Foster Dublin?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. This coming Friday, the middle school will be doing their Pinwheel for Peace Project again this year. The pinwheel will be displaced in our downtown area, and they, they'll be in place of our, they'll be inserted into the flagpole, the holes that we have in the ground to place the flag, so you'll see decorative pinwheels with messages of peace that will be done by our students and, at the middle school, and others that have participated in the program. There should be a giant pinwheel right out front of Stop and Shop, so please take a moment, read the messages, or add your own messages of what you would like to see world peace would look like, and how we all can work towards accomplishing that goal. The Fire Department had the dedication of the fire truck, and it's called traditionally a wet-down. It was the first one that I attended, and it was really an exciting event with the dedication of the truck and the ladder truck, and the truck being blessed and getting a tour of what it looks like, and a lot of persons participated in the event, and it was well-attended, and it was a lot, it was very exciting. They were, they are very happy to have their, their new fire, fire ladder truck. OEM, Department of Emergency Management, they're putting together brochures for the upcoming hurricane season about different safety tips, such as batteries that you would need, make sure you have batteries for your flashlight, have emergency supplies. At our next council meeting, the OEM coordinator will be here, and he will be providing you an updated list of the do's and the don'ts that you need to, that you need to have during, or hopefully we won't have another repeat of Sandy, but during an emergency, what you would need to have. And also reminders about changing your electrical, changing your batteries in your homes and in your emergency, in your emergency battery kits at home, and keeping emergency supplies on hand. With that, we'll move on to the new Police Department. The construction is moving along on schedule, and we're hoping that we will have a dedication or opening at the end of April 2014. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Potts?
Thank you. In addition to all the different activities that we have at our senior youth center and all the different sports programs, I'd just like to mention special attention to a men's, excuse me, basketball league, which is going to be its second season. It started this past late winter, early spring, and it was a very successful season for the teams. We actually had four teams, which was great for starting out for the first time, and that league is going to begin again next Tuesday, September 24th, is its first game, and pretty much the deadline for registering to be a player for that basketball team group is this coming September 20th, just in a few days. So you don't have long to register for that, but I did want to make special attention to that because it is a relatively new program with the men's basketball program. Also, just want to mention the Highland Park Townwide Garage Sale. That's going to be held on October 5th, Saturday, and Sunday, October 6th. That's from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There's information on the website, hpgaragesale@gmail.com, if you want to email. There's no fees or permits required for that garage sale for that particular weekend. It's a joint venture between Century 21, the Department of Community Services, and the Highland Park PTO as well. And lastly, we don't have a location yet, we're firming that up. The annual Halloween party is going to be on Sunday, October 27th. That'll be from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. There'll be live music, a bounce house, a costume parade, refreshments, face and nail painting. That will be held indoors, we're just firming up the location for this year. We found it a great success last year, more by accident because we needed to with the weather forecast and everything that took place last fall, but we are planning to do it indoors, and I will report the location at our next meeting in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Welkowitz?
Yes, a couple of things, thank you. First, thanks, Mark, for coming out tonight and giving us the first of what we hope is our, maybe a regular quarterly report from the library. And Mark mentioned that, that the Borough worked to repair some of the driveway and the sidewalks, and the people that you need to be thanking are Borough Administrator Kathy Kovac, Patrick Malley, council president who's not here, and Don Rush, and the crew at DPW. Thank you, guys, for that. And a couple notices. We worked on a gun safety forum last year, and we're very happy to help announce a gun buyback program that's occurring on September 27th and 28th in three locations, I believe, New Brunswick, Perth Amboy, I can't recall the other one. The information's available on the website. Take advantage of it. New Jersey residents can surrender up to three guns for, what's it, $250 apiece? This is a tremendous opportunity, and no questions asked. So if you happen to have one, a weapon laying around that you have no use for, please, by all means, take it, take advantage of this opportunity. Walk the Park, the Mayor's Wellness Campaign's new program to encourage healthful lifestyles, will be hosting the first of many non-themed walks down in the Meadows, the fourth Thursday of every month. We're going to try to meet there or in other locations in town. You don't have to register for this walk. It's not going to be a walk and talk. We're just trying to get an organized walk together at least once a month. These are in addition to the theme walks that we're having. Alan Williams from our Environmental Commission has agreed, though, to be on this walk, as he, he and his wife walk all the time, and he's agreed to be on this one. That's going to be on Thursday, the 26th, at 6:00 p.m. Please meet down at the Meadows Trailhead, which is on the corner of, right off the corner of Valentine and 5th. And on the agenda tonight are two important things. One is an ordinance to ban fracking in Highland Park. A recent survey by the U.S. Geological Survey shows that there is natural gas under the Newark Shale, which reaches from northern Jersey down to New Brunswick, where it might be unlikely that fracking exploration or drilling would take place in Little Highland Park. This is still an important ordinance to put through. The governor refuses to ban fracking in the state of New Jersey. If we can ban it in this town, and hopefully other municipalities will follow, we can try to ban fracking in the state from the grassroots, or from the ground up. And we're also passing another resolution, which is a renewal of previous resolutions to ban fracking statewide, to ban fracking nationwide, to ban the processing of fracking waste and wastewater in New Jersey. It's happening now. This is not a regulated process. And also to ban the expansion of liquefied natural gas infrastructure, which is being built offshore in New York and New Jersey. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to follow up on something that Suzie said. The gun buyback, thank you for mentioning that, that's really important. Also, that anyone who can, who wishes to turn in their gun at any time can call up their police department, let them know that they have weapons that they want to return, and they can always drop them off to their local police department. So as long as they give a phone call, even going to the gun buyer, you should call your police department and know that you're going to participate in the gun buyback program, just for safety purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beryl Mittler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I want to iterate what was said by Jamie earlier about our Arts in the Park Festival, which is occurring on September 29th. From what I understand, we will have a record number of booths of artists and artisans participating this year, so I hope everyone will be able to show up and purchase some local artwork. We will be, as I've mentioned in the past, recent past, we have come up with some ideas for marketing the Borough of Highland Park to our residents and to people living in surrounding communities, and the marketing task force will be meeting to fine-tune that, so I hope to have a presentation here for everyone in, I would say, within a month. Finally, there is a resolution that we will be discussing this evening. It's our Revolution 9, 13, 291, and it calls for the state legislature to refund to Highland Park and other municipalities the funding of tax, energy tax rebates that are supposed to be coming back to the municipalities to help with local programming, but the state has been holding on to all of our funds, or all of us have funds they've been holding on to. They have released some of them, but just to give you an idea, the state owes Highland Park over $2 million in money that belongs to us, that they are using to balance the state budget, while we are suffering here, and the residents of New Jersey continually see increasing real estate taxes. So I think if you have an opportunity to pick up a copy of this resolution and take a look at it, I think it will be an eye-opener for many of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Erickson?
Just briefly, the Borough is starting its budget process over again this year with the distribution of budget materials to the departments in October.
Thank you. Borough Administrators' Report?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to report on the sidewalk improvement program. We're well underway. Contracts have been mailed, and about 100 have been returned. We've mailed about 500, and I wanted to make a clarification on the contract. The costs are payable either in full, after the construction is complete, or you have the option of paying over five years. We will be billing you every April, one-fifth of the cost, as long as you pay within 30 days, as long as you pay within 30 days, there is no interest charge.
Excuse me, 30 days of the due date of the payment?
Of when the billing went out. We'll be billing it April 1st. If you pay by April 30th, you are charged no interest. I know there was some confusion on that. If you do not pay by April 30th, we're following the same suit as the taxes, where it's eight and 18 percent. It's 8 percent on the first $1,500, and 18 percent, anything above that. That's only if you make a late payment. I just wanted to be clear on that. Also, there has been some talk of a concern about the roots, the Borough tree roots lifting sidewalks. I wanted to let people know that the council with the Shade Tree Commission are looking at certain products that are going to hopefully help have roots grow down instead of up to prevent this from happening in the future. They're still researching it. When they have a final decision on how they're going to handle it, we'll report it here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Borough Attorney?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
I am going to open the floor now for public discussion. Do we have any members of the public that would like to be heard? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, Karina Wilkinson, 100 Lawrence Avenue. I want to thank you, the council and mayor, for again being the first. You were the first to pass a call for a statewide and national ban on fracking, and for today taking the step to, that I'm counting on you to take, to pass the ordinance to ban fracking in Highland Park. This is, as Councilman Welkowitz said, so important, given the fact that Governor Christie refuses to sign a statewide ban, and we have no protection at the national level in terms of President Obama stopping this practice. If we take a look at what's happening in Colorado today, that have flooded gas fields, oil tanks full of oil, where there's pipelines that have been ruptured, it's a disaster that's taking the agencies' time to get to, to understand, to wrap their head around. We just don't have the protections that we need. So thank you for taking this step, being the first, and the first municipality in New Jersey to pass an ordinance, and I'm hoping there will be many more municipalities in New Jersey to follow suit. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm going to close public discussion and ask the clerk to report on advertising an ordinance banning hydraulic fracking for consideration of passage on final reading by title.
An ordinance banning hydraulic fracking in the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, New Jersey, was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's a publication or a file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, can I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading?
Sumo.
Second.
Okay, public hearing? Okay, there appears to be no public hearing on this that's required, so can I have a resolution to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? I need a motion.
Motion. Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is passed. Can I have the clerk, would you report on advertising the Handicap Parking Ordinance Amendment for consideration of passage on final reading by title?
An ordinance amending on-street parking regulations for residents occupied by handicapped persons and amending the code of the Borough of Highland Park was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title, an affidavit's a publication or a file. The ordinance was posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, can I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Sumo.
Sumo.
We have a motion, read it a second. Can I interest you in a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Public hearing? There appears to be no public hearing required, well, not required, there's no public comments, so can I have a resolution to adopt and advertise the ordinance on final reading by title? I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Beryl Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Welkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk, would you report on the introduction of lease ordinance for the capital equipment improvement and financing program of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, approving and authorizing the entering into execution and delivery of a lease agreement with the Middlesex County Improvement Authority relating to the issuance of county guaranteed capital equipment and improvement revenue bonds. Series 2013 of the Middlesex County Improvement Authority has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title. of passage on first reading by title.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Bremmottler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Clerk, can you report on the introduction of the bond ordinance for replacement of the water main on Montgomery Street for consideration of passage on first reading by title?
Bond ordinance providing for the replacement of a water main on Montgomery Street within the Borough of Highland Park County of Middlesex State of New Jersey appropriating $350,000 from the Water and Sewer Utility of the Borough and authorizing the issuance of $350,000 bonds or notes to finance the cost has been duly introduced by the Finance Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title, and the supplemental death statement prepared by the Finance Director was filed in the clerk's office on September 17, 2013.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Bremmottler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. We're up to our consent agenda. I believe somebody has an action item they'd like to move on the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. I would like us to pull off the Resolution Number 913-291 so that it can be amended.
Okay. So I need a motion to, what do we do? Are we amending the consent agenda? Or?
You're separating. A motion to delete that item and adopt the remainder.
Okay, what Ed said. Can I have a motion to do that, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do I need a roll call for that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was definitely unanimous. Thank you for your enthusiasm. Okay, so with that, the consent agenda consists of items 913-284 through 913-290 inclusive, and 913-292 through 913-293 inclusive. That's a resolution to approve the business, to authorize replacement of borough hall railings, to approve change orders for the public safety building, to approve Pay Estimate Number 12 HNS Construction for the public safety building, to amend the annual salary resolution, calling for ban on fracking and liquefied natural gas infrastructure, to appoint redevelopment agency member Clint Andrews, to authorize repairs to sewer lines on Cleveland Avenue and Lincoln Avenue, to appoint a municipal court judge, and for chat, I'm sorry, that's the last one on consent agenda. So can I have a motion to approve all those items?
So moved.
Second? I'm sorry, I need a second. Second. Okay, roll call?
Councilwoman Bremmottler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay. Shall we amend this other item now? Should we do that now or do that at the end? We can do that now.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to recommend that we amend the Resolution Number 913-291, calling for the restoration of energy tax receipts to Highland Park and other municipalities.
Okay, and you're making a motion that we do that?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Can we do that by acclamation, Ed? Or do we need a roll call?
Just a resolution, all in favor, just a...
Okay, so can, all in favor of making that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And do we vote on the resolution? Do we do that the same way, by acclamation? Okay, so all in favor of the resolution calling for the restoration of energy tax receipts to Highland Park and other municipalities in New Jersey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that motion is carried, and let's see. So I need a motion to adopt Chapter 159 drunk driving enforcement.
Motion to adopt.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Bremmottler?
Epstein.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, I am going to appoint, or I hereby appoint, Brenda Brakely to the Arts Commission. I need a motion to confirm.
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Bremmottler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Thank you. I hereby appoint or reappoint Kim Hammond as a regular member of the Highland Park Planning Board. No confirmation is necessary. That brings us to our second public discussion. Any public comment? Okay, so no public comment. Can I have a motion to adjourn to our conference session?
Motion. Second.
Okay, meeting's adjourned. Have a good night.